Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission's special meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meetings on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest-to-real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. As always, the first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Lehman?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Commissioner Yurwitz?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Vice Chair Tegn?
Here.
And Chair Davies?
Here. We're joined this evening by Community Development Department staff, Director David Loyah and Senior Planner Delo Freitas, as well as Deputy Director Dylan Savage, running our tech. Next, we will have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are on the agenda. We will not be opening public comment on each item individually. If you have comments about items that are listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen or by pressing star nine if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. Feel free to state your name for the record. Maybe we have the first speaker.
And I have brought actual printed petition signatures for each of you to have. There are ten copies, and I'd wish to hand those out at this time. And they are living documents. I actually have my totals are up from here, so if you hang on to them, you'll see additions over time, so there's something that's useful for you. Thank you. Oh, I'm moving. Hello to staff and commissioners. As you know, Patricia Kombianika, I and others have been circulating a paper petition for the designation of the L Street Rails Corridor as a linear park and to abandon the K and L Street couplet. We support the existing L Street bicycle pedestrian pathway to be officially designated as a linear park from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard, and that this linear park be preserved and enhanced as a green space for recreation, play, and community. We also support the spoken recommendation of the Chair of the Arcata Transportation Safety Committee at the August second, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Revise the circulation plan that eliminates L Street as being considered for new streets and car traffic. This area is recommended to be a car-free linear park that prioritizes people. Today, Patricia and I spoke to a number of business owners and residents in the Creamery and picked up another fourteen signatures. The conversation was refreshing. The overwhelming sentiment is to enhance the L Street Rails Corridor into a linear park and not pave over the greenways to the north and south. The signatures I'm distributing to you are six hundred and ninety-five, although the petition is a living document, is now up to seven fifteen due to online signatures and the conversations we had today. To date, our total paper petition signatures are five seventy-two, our online signatures are one forty-three, for a total of seven hundred and fifteen. Our shared community vision is to preserve and enhance the open spaces at the north and south ends of the L Street Rails Corridor in conjunction with the entire corridor to dedicate this segment to a linear park. Thanks, and please keep considering that. A lot of people out there would much rather see this be a park and not paved over as a road. Thank you.
Thanks for those comments.
Good evening. I wanted to address the historical preservation element. I'm probably one of the few in this room, other than one other person, that's gone through the process, and I'll have to say that, from my perspective, going through it, it was a pretty intense experience. And unfortunately, how I feel what happened after that process, that other applicants that went through it had a much easier time. They got to skip the Historical Preservation Committee, and, you know, it seems like if you've got connections in town or you hire people that are on these committees, you get a little bit to skip ahead in the process. And I have written about this in the past, and it's unfortunate because it's important for people to believe in government and that we're all treated the same way. We all have the same process, and I'll have to say, that's not how I feel, the City of Arcata, in my experience. I'll give an example, even like on parking. I went a struggle for a whole year because, you know, it's kind of ironic now, but you had to come up with, you know, more parking on the property, not on the street, but on the property. So even though there's a space in front of the front door, that wasn't a possibility. You know, you have neighbors that have illegal units that get permits from the city to park there. I mean, it's unbelievable how you get put through this process and people blatantly have illegal units occupy parking. I'll have to say that the next historical property that was in a residential area, that they just had one parking spot, and basically, they wanted to increase the density from the standpoint of a lawyer's office to, you know, having classes where thirty people would drive in the neighborhood. Piece of cake. They just basically, David went to bat with city council, and they passed it, and it was no problem. So I had no issue with the yoga center, but I had a problem with that, you know, how one applicant is treated one way, not given a break, another one is. It's unbelievable. I'll have to say, as far as what you have in this element right now tonight, basically, you had a house on Twelfth and I that was a historical house that was torn down, you know, and even in the language here, you were supposed to go do everything possible to prevent that from being tearing down, but then at the last possible thing is to recycle, like something like the siding. The siding was needed for our property, and basically, it was just trashed. Bulldozer came through. I happened to walk by, even tried to get him to stop, and used material. It all went to the dump.
Thanks for your comments, Gregory.
Good evening. My name's Patricia Kombianika. I was going to talk a little bit about something else, but I'm going to follow Gregory. Jim and I are one of those people that registered our house historic after we bought it, and yeah, it was a really long and arduous process, but we knew what we were getting into. And at the time, this was quite a few years ago, the city was under different management and different staff, and they were very transparent, they were very clear, communicative, and actually, we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of time, but it was worth it, our idea of what we wanted for that house, fit with what the city allowed us. Going on through the years on that project, since we're restoring it by hand, and it took us some time, in the shift of new management with the city and new staffing, we ended up abandoning, turning our Victorian into a commercial unit because the lack of communication was so devastatingly and so aggravatingly poor. So I would like to see when restoring... So we were going to turn our house into a restaurant. We decided to abandon that idea, and now we're going to, we have new permits, we're going to return it back into our residence, but I just want you all to keep in mind, we were willing to put the time and the hours and the effort into it, and there was a change in communication with the city. Anyhow, I've been knocking on doors again because of the linear park and getting the word out and trying to get a communication with the residents again. The overwhelming... I got a lot of things back today. There are three main things I got back. One was, people were saying, "The city's not going to listen to us. They're going to do whatever they want to do." That was one that I came without any prompting on my part. The other one was, well, they overwhelmingly wanted, they also remember the feasibility study, they remember that it was supposed to be a linear park back in the day. They brought that up without me bringing it to their attention. The other one was that they overwhelmingly heard, "The city is lying to us. They're not being transparent. They're lying to us." Please, they said, "Please go and get things in writing. Don't go into their office. Don't talk off of record. Always keep it on record." And so, it was just, you know, it's great. I love talking to the people. They're wonderful, and I think the city really should be listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Hi, good evening. I'd like to cede my time to Fred Wise.
Yes, thank you. I'm Fred Wise. First, the city council has said that they may be looking at their August sixteenth or thirtieth meeting for a meeting with the Planning Commission, so you may have a one month respite there. Next, I'm going to read from the first chapter of the Historic Preservation Element, right here. "No city can hope to understand its present or forecast its future if it fails to recognize its past, if it fails to recognize its past. By tracing and preserving its past, the city can gain a clear sense of the process by which it achieved its present form and substance." For the commissioners who are newer, and for the other commissioners also, you may want to look at arcataone.com, the transcription and video of the July twenty-sixth meeting, July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, on the arcata.com/pc link. This is, all the links are there for you. Is it that meeting that Community Development Director Loyah proposed that we pass and adopt the Gateway Plan and the General Plan before even seeing the Form Based Code? The commission didn't care for that. The commission had been asking for some thread or some semblance of the Form Based Code for several months, been denied by Director Loyah. Commissioner Tagney asked, "Do you have any time sense of when we'll seeing this? Do you have any time sense of that?" The response from David Loyah, "Yeah, my hope is that we're going to start seeing the beginnings of it." I consider that to be a nonsensical and purposely vague statement. Now, moving on to the present, I said this to the city council on Wednesday. I've written it in articles. I'm going to say it here to be clear. I do not blame the Planning Commission, and specifically, I do not blame Chair Davies for the Brown Act violation that occurred at your last meeting. I feel the Chair was put into an unfortunate position, and he did what he needed to do. What happened? You asked at the Saturday, April twenty-second meeting, specifically, that an item be put on the agenda, that the item for the rezoning be put on the agenda. Commissioner Simmons asked it to be put first on the agenda. This is all very clear. Director Loyah never put that on the agenda. The result, there was an e-notification that was sent out on that Monday that said, "April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, special meeting, outstanding items." Very vague, nonsensical. What's the result? Over thirty people called me or emailed me and asked me about that, what was going to be on that agenda. I couldn't tell them. There is nothing in the existing agenda that referred to the Land Use Map Amendment or rezoning. This is a clear... But you had the meeting, and people came and spoke, and you discussed it, which is good, but it's a violation of the Brown Act, completely. Other violations have been a little more obscure. This was, no question about it. So I've written and communicated with the city manager. I think the city is really on thin ice with a lot of these very close-to-Brown Act violations for the lawyers who are here. I will gladly send you case law that I have researched. I'm not a law researcher, but they're easy to find, okay? In cases where there is a vague, nondescriptive, or misleading agenda titled description, the court has consistently ruled against the city on that. Now, what happened at that meeting? A commissioner asked three times that this be heard by the commission, and Mr. Loyah gave what I consider to be a nonsensical answer for the first two times, and then the commissioner insisted, and it came before the whole commission. You voted unanimously within two minutes. He said, "I would love to tell people when you're going to talk about this, but it's really out of any of our control to be able to predict that." And I say, "No, it's not out of your control, one little bit. You put it on the agenda, and you do it." Now, in terms of the housing tonight, housing affordability and homeownership, I don't know if you're going to get to it or not, the, what is on the staff report I consider so nonsensical, it hardly... I'm tempted to just disregard it entirely. I am going to write an article about it, okay, to be clear. But the, I've said before, there's three things I want to see in this Gateway Plan. One is the L Street linear park. Second is actual workforce, affordable housing for people. And the third is homeownership opportunity. None of these things are easy. Well, the first one's easy. The housing, I'm not saying it's easy. The commission has talked about having a subcommittee. We've talked about talking to experts. We've talked about talking to lenders and developers. That's, we need to start somewhere. I'm not an expert, but I'm more of an expert than most people. I do a lot of research. The statements in the staff report cannot be supported by fact, and I'll go through this in a future article. I appreciate what you're doing. It's not easy. I know that. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Commenters online?
Yeah, we have one. Go ahead, Jane.
Hello, Jane Woodward. Along the lines of the agenda issue that was brought up by Fred, I read this agenda, which was vague, and so then I read the staff report for today's meeting to try to determine the exact items on tonight's agenda and concluded as follows. "As noted under recommendation, the meeting tonight will focus on the historical preservation element and topics in the Gateway Plan Concerns and Solutions List. Does that include all topics in the Concerns and Solutions List or only those related to affordable housing, gentrification, and homeownership as implied in the introduction? This lack of clarity is a problem for the public if you want to avoid our wanting to address the other topics such as Seva Horizon or the L Street Pathway, for example. It would have been helpful to both the Planning Commission and the public if the Concerns and Solutions List had been provided as an attachment rather than having to search for it. Note that in the recommendation, as time allows, the commission should return to the circulation element and land use element bike rack items. It would have been useful to have an attachment with those bike rack items. In the introduction, it says, 'As time allows, the commission will return to policy recommendations held over from previous meeting.' Same problem. Those policy recommendations need to be attached. So if you want to save the time and energy in the commission and the public, and not frustrate the public in particular, it's quite important to make it easy for them to access the actual items that will or may be on the agenda, even if there may not be time to discuss them. Please fix this. It's within your power to require that to happen, or certainly to request that to happen, and for the community development staff to do that. Thank you for your attention, and I did send you all copies of this, written copies of this before. So I'm going to be very interested to see what you actually get to tonight, and whether I should have talked about some more of the policy issues. But since I didn't know, I didn't spend the time to do that. Anyway, most of them, you've heard from me. So thank you very much. Good luck."
Thanks, Jane.
That's all we have.
All right. As always, we appreciate all of the public comment. The next item on our agenda this evening is our business items. We have four business items this evening. The first is to approve Planning Commission minutes from our special meeting on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Can we get a motion to approve these minutes?
I'd like to pull one of those sets of minutes, please.
Okay.
Which one, so I can make a motion?
April twenty-seventh.
Okay, I move to...
Yeah, these are not on consent. These are each individual items, so you'll take them up individually, so, yeah, yeah. Sorry for the confusion.
Can I move to approve the April twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting?
We're on April twenty-second.
That one was just pulled, right?
I think Judith asked to pull the twenty-seventh. Is that correct, Judith?
Two-seven?
Two-seven is pulled. Two-two is on the table. We have a motion. Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've passed business item A. Now, moving on to our second item, which is to approve Planning Commission minutes from our special meeting on April twenty-fifth. Can we get a motion to approve those minutes?
I move to approve.
We have a motion. Can we get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Judith, and then you wanted to pull the meetings minutes from the twenty-second?
Yeah, from the twenty-seventh. We don't have a motion on the twenty-seventh yet, so the process to revise is just to point out what the issue is. Under business item B, "Consider a recommendation to the city council on the general plan updates." The commission considered land use map amendments and made recommendations on two areas of public concern. There was a request from a commissioner, that's me, to consider the rest of the items. Those were not considered and apparently postponed to some other date. I'd like to have the minutes read that consideration of all but two of the rezoning proposals has been postponed and was not addressed at that meeting.
Does anyone else have any comments or concerns about the minutes from the twenty-seventh?
I support that.
Do you want to make a motion to amend those minutes?
I would move to amend the draft minutes to add, "Other rezoning recommendations were not addressed. Despite Planning Commissioner's desire to do so, they were postponed to an unnamed future meeting," which is what I'm calling the bike rack these days, because who knows when we're going to get to those things? And there have actually been members of the public who had expected to be addressed, and they were not.
If I could offer to have the language reflect action items that were taken as opposed to particular feelings of commissioners, I'd hate to, you know, infer that in the future, we're going to insinuate feelings onto particular actions.
Okay, maybe the important aspect of this part of the action minutes, and I know we did decide to take action minutes, I think that they should also explicitly reflect inactions when there's an item on the agenda that we failed to address.
So if I could just make the, if I could reiterate what I think I heard you say with that one subtraction, "Other rezoning recommendations were not considered by the Planning Commission, but were postponed to a future meeting." Does that work for you?
Okay. Given that language clarification from Director Loyah, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So amended and passed. Okay, moving then directly into the meat of this evening's discussion. Item four on our business items is to consider a recommendation to the city council on the general plan updates, and can we, as always, begin with the staff report, please?
Yeah, just briefly to orient the commission and the public to this agenda item, in particular, based on some of the public comment that we received tonight. The agenda topic is called "Consider a recommendation to the city council on the general plan updates." As we discussed many months ago, the language is intentionally broad to cover the full scope of general plan updates that are proposed in the work that we're doing to allow you to have discussions about any of the elements under concern. The information goes on to read that this meeting will focus on reviewing the Historic Preservation Element, which is the main subject matter for tonight. We'll go through the framework that you established several meetings ago, March twenty-seventh, I believe it was, to get through that material, which was noticed on this agenda item and then published on Friday, e-notified to the public, and placed a physical copy into the binder. Based on your review of the material, being able to give us the feedback in enough time for us to be able to publish it, at least seventy-two hours in advance, as your framework says, doesn't allow us to get it into the agenda itself. We can't attach it to the staff report because it's published before you provide your feedback. And so this is the only way to get these informations back out to the public. I understand people would like to see those materials in the staff report, attached to the agenda, but the framework just doesn't allow for that. But it does allow for the Planning Commission to effectively communicate that information. It gets posted to our website at the same time as it gets published to the binder as well. The information on this agenda goes on to tell the public and the commission that, as time allows, as you get through this material and the historic resources element, that the commission will return to policy recommendations held over from the previous meetings. It allows you to get into any of the items that are in the bike rack that are published that are continually updated. It's not new information each time, it's the updated information to the Planning Commission Discussion Guideline. The recommendation goes on to further specify that you will be doing the Historic Preservation Elements and Topics in the Gateway Area Plan Concerns and Solutions List. Again, we've been maintaining within Attachment A to each of these your framework, which describes this process in great detail, as well as a table. If you look on packet page sixteen, you'll see the table. The table identifies the topic areas that you're going to be discussing from the Gateway Specific Concern Solution Sets, as well as General Plan Element, and it gives that specific date on which those discussions are going to happen. And so I hope that the public is informed as they read through these materials that have been very consistent. We've made minor tweaks in response to, you know, public comment that we've received to make sure that the process is very transparent. So we've made those minor tweaks, but for all intents and purposes, this has been, since you started reviewing these elements in detail, this has been the exact same process over and over again. And so I hope the public, with this explanation and with the materials that they see in the packets being similar across meetings, have a good sense for the way that... packets being similar across meetings, have a good sense for the way that we're approaching this material. In your packet, you received a markup version of the historical resources element, along with the maps that are in that element. And then the, the materials that you provided me on Friday with your comments were compiled. We did receive some late comments, which I emailed out this morning. I apologize I didn't get them out yesterday, which was my intent. And those comments were also placed on the internet, put in the binder, and e-notified to people to let them know that more material was up there. I've since incorporated those comments that I received into your discussion guide, and so this will be, you know, you're viewing this for the first time with those comments incorporated. Again, per our process that we've identified, I've put some items into consent. They are here for you now, and I've added one of those late items to the consent. Yes, and can we get the screen up on the internal? Thank you, Dylan. Appreciate that. So we have the historic preservation comments that were compiled for today's date from commissioners, and staff has recommended that the comments regarding H6A shown here, removing the parking exception to H4, modifying the language here as shown, and to HB4, adding some, some language. With this note that historical elements listed on the potential resources list will be protected through CEQA. And then the late submittal for H1 to add some language around property owners' efforts to preserve and restore and adapt use of significant structures, that we recommend all those be adopted on consent.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent list, or are we comfortable with the consent list as it currently lives?
I have a concern over H4B.
Okay. Do we want to pull that for discussion and see if we can pass the rest of the consent? Are there any other concerns from commissioners about these, the consent list? Sounds like no opposition, so let's pass the bulk of that consent list and move to discuss H4B. And go ahead, Joel. Let's hear your suggestions.
Yeah, my concern is the deletion, let me try to focus on this, of the phrase "and does not destroy the historic, historical or architectural character of the property." This is a historical preservation element. I, I, it's my view that historical, architecturally historic properties that otherwise, you know, meet the criteria should be maintained. And to eliminate a criterion that looks at, that does not destroy the historic or architectural character is kind of antithetical to this entire element.
Go ahead, Matt.
Okay. So I was the one who proposed this, and this was actually, sorry, I, I turn to talk to people usually when I'm talking, but then I don't talk into the microphone, and so I have to be careful. Before you joined the commission, we had a conversation about the term "character of the neighborhood" and how that term can sometimes be used in a negative way. And so we actually changed that term where it appears in the land use element to that language that I used, "established and planned neighborhood elements," right? So instead of, in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, it says "that." I will say that I, I mean, I, this is the historical element, and that historical is in there as well as character, right? And those are sort of two different concepts. But that was the origin of, of that change was, and it's also partly just to make it consistent with the land use element.
Does anybody else have a comment? Judith?
Yeah. You know, the, the first time I read that, I said, "Yeah, okay." And then I'm, I'm looking at it again, and I, I, I think I might agree with, with Yoel on that with regard to architectural elements and character of the property. And I'm okay with going with Matt, your proposed language with regard to established and planned neighborhood elements, but I do think it's important to return the historical or architectural elements of the property to that. CEQA is not sufficient to protect that. It needs to be in our policy rather than relying on kind of an external process. This is the city of Arcata's policy, and it needs to be in our rules. So I, I propose a kind of a compromise between those, getting the architectural and historical elements back in there as David has done, and then using Matt's language for the established and planned neighborhood elements, but adding those second rather than before the architect, the historical or architectural elements of the property. In other words, put the specific property or site first and the neighborhood second as the original language had done. This looks good.
Okay. Thanks, Judith. Dan, did you have a comment?
Oh, I'm just reflecting on the challenge of this topic, particularly on A Street a few years ago when the Mormon church property was being, it was subdivided and sold as five separate parcels, four of which came through us for a design review. And it's just super challenging, even though that's in a neighborhood conservation area. The architectural style of two of the buildings that have since been built is very modern. It has, you know, you wouldn't think it was anywhere near a neighborhood conservation area with a historic overlay. However, two doors down, there's a 1960-something house with a very similar style. And, you know, we kind of went all over the place on this long conversation, but hung our hat on the, and there were people in the neighborhood saying this just doesn't fit. Well, two doors down, there happens to be one before there was any design review. So it just, it gets really difficult to, to judge. And Arcata's full of inconsistent housing styles all over every neighborhood. So we have these carved-out neighborhood conservation zones, and I super get the goal of protecting them, but when push comes to shove, it's, it's really hard to finish the discussion and the argument in a very pure way. Anyway, that's just reflection. I'm not pushing one way or the other.
Yeah, it's always going to be, always going to be case by case, given the variety.
It's a challenging topic.
Does this, does this compromise kind of speak to your concerns that you originally pulled this for?
Yeah, yes, it does. Amenable to Judith's suggestion.
I am as well.
Okay. Is anyone opposed to this proposed language tweak to address those concerns? Okay. Passed. Moving on.
I think this might have been... Was this Judith? Was this, oh, no.
I, I, I think that one was, that the noteworthy structures.
This one's yours, Joel.
Yeah, that was mine. I, I just didn't see a definition of noteworthy structures, and that fell, that policy fell within a discussion of potentially historic resources. I didn't know whether, to me, I kind of thought that was an editorial, but I wasn't sure. I just wanted to note it.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I think, I think we intended to eliminate the term noteworthy, and I think that was just a holdover, which is part of the reason why it probably didn't make sense to you. And we tried to get the policy to more align with the way that CEQA treats historic resources or potentially historic resources. And so we've removed, in the current draft, we've removed that reference to noteworthy. And then in terms of changing the, the implementation measures to ongoing, we, we feel like there are, you know, state law and, you know, OPR guidance to try and identify timeframes for actually implementing your general plan. We would like to try and keep those in there. Would be the staff recommendation. So staff would suggest we have addressed the first question and don't make the changes to the second question.
David, who determines if a structure is potentially historic?
So that is a really good question. Historic resource designation is one of the sort of most difficult and subjective decisions to be made. What the process has been in the past is to, you know, basically have any structure that, you know, anyone thinks may be old, go through a historic resource designation process. They, they have a historic preservation specialist tell staff in the city, you know, whether it is or isn't. Because of the challenges that that presented to many projects that were not ultimately determined to be historic, you know, getting caught up in that process, the city went to more of a bright line. If you're designated by the city council as a historic landmark, then you're a historic resource. If you're not, then you're not. And that was kind of too much in, you know, the pendulum swinging in the other direction. And so what we've attempted to do under my tenure is to pull back to more of a middle ground to try and give some of the certainty associated with the bright line determination through, but that captures resources that aren't necessarily designated by going through a process of inventorying and identifying those resources in a public forum upfront, and then publishing that as a list and a map, so that when someone comes into our office and they happen to have an older structure, we can look at the map and see, has this been, is this a potential resource or not? And that process involves a historic landmark committee. It involves the planning commission. It involves the city council. We're going through our first fully, full execution of this concept with the Gateway Area Plan. The Gateway Area Plan has a historic section, and in that historic section, there are certain properties that are identified as either having, you know, a formal landmark designation on them, or that through this process, we went through this public process, we went through that included public noticing of individuals who own those properties, that we've gone through a whittling process to find just those resources that, you know, our historic resource committee recommends as true historic resources. You will make that recommendation to the city council, and ultimately, the city council will adopt it. So, long story short, we're trying to create a process that has a lot more structure to it, so that anyone walking down the street and thinks something looks cool and old can't just say that's a historic resource. There's a lot of disagreement among historic preservationists as to what structures would qualify, and so it's, you know, what we're trying to do is to sort of get a middle ground where we've got enough certainty around certain structures. Now, there will be, we'll have to reassess this over time. There will be structures that currently aren't historic, maybe that become historic, but we're trying to do the best we can through this process to find a middle ground and, you know, identify these upfront so that people know what they're dealing with, what process they're dealing with in advance.
Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I just want to elucidate my concern and why I suggested the language I did that's, I think is just a little bit up above the screen there, there. The general plan, as it's currently worded, talks about a list of potentially historic resources that the city has, and then it sets forth sort of a process of what kind of review something gets if it's on the list of potentially historic resources. But it doesn't really talk about anything that may be potentially historic but is not yet on the list. And every day, a new property theoretically becomes 50 years old. And that's why, when my thought was, well, this process sort of has to be ongoing, because if you're going to maintain a list of potentially historic properties, some, you know, and one of the criterion that I think architectural preservationists look at is the age of the property and being a minimum of 50 years old, and Judith can certainly correct me if I'm wrong. And if that's so, like, every day, potentially somebody else's property becomes 50 years old. And so what do you do about something that's potentially historic, but the city hasn't gotten around to, you know, because you can't look at every property every day, it's not yet on that list? So that, that's why I thought, as long as the general plan is already talking about some sort of review process, that it also incorporate a more general review, which you may already be doing, but have the review process be broader, not just looking at properties on the list, but those that may also qualify to be on the list, that are not yet there.
Go ahead, Judith. And then Peter.
Yeah. Some of you may remember a few years back when the question came up of whether the entire Sunnybri, lower Sunnybri subdivision would suddenly be considered historic when it hit 50 years. And that discussion went on and on and on. It was during a period when we actually still had a historic and design review commission, which then became a committee, which was then disbanded, and their responsibilities were given to the planning commission, but my understanding is that some of them were divvied into the review authority. And so the, the gist of the discussion was what happens if we have a set of criteria that are so restrictive that it will prevent people from doing things to their properties that are basically just fancy maintenance or small additions, where this requirement kicks in either because the property is suddenly 50 years old, or because they require a building permit, and someone said, "Oops, that may be historic." And, and the, the, the bottom line that we came up with is, I think, reliance on the list and on a discretionary process in addition to that, which is kind of what is in this, in this draft here. The, the list is periodically updated, right? I don't know when the list was last updated.
The, the current list that we have hasn't been updated since the, the general plan was adopted, the one that's in the general plan. We certainly have a list that we maintain of newly added landmark structures, but I, I think you're absolutely right, Commissioner Mayor. This, this language kind of goes almost in the exact opposite direction that we're attempting to accomplish with, with, you know, the lists and the maps. We will need to update those regularly. I don't think that we're going to need to update them on an annual basis. It may be every five or 10 years that we have to review these. And it's, it's not simply the criteria that a building has become 50 years old that makes it potentially historic, and a building doesn't have to be 50 years old to be potentially historic, which allows us, through the process we're going through right now of identifying these and mapping them, to look at buildings that may not be 50 years old now, but certainly have, you know, whatever characteristics the city has, you know, determined to be eligible for being historic, identify those now, even if you wanted to put a trigger point and say in 50, you know, when it becomes 50 years old, it will be historic. So I, I think that the process, you know, is currently drafted helps address a lot of the history that we've had reviewing historic resources in the city of Arcata. There is also always, you know, this potentiality for, you know, if, if staff has real concerns that something comes up that we just generally, genuinely missed in our inventory and assessment, that we can always kick those up to a higher review. that we can always kick those up to a higher review. The way we reasoned is that, you know, we're a pretty small city, we have about 8,000 units. We can go and look at every single unit and bring that to the decision makers and say, you know, these units we think are, are historic. We, we will have a handful of them, a reasonable amount to be able to review. So that's, that's sort of why we recommended not adopting this new language.
Peter?
I have a, a comment that follows here, which, but I want to make a comment about this too. That the fact that we can take any historic building and any potentially historic building and require a building permit or some kind of oversight for any change is a barrier to some changes that could be very beneficial and might not occur because of the barriers. And I'll speak to that later.
Can I just, I want to jump on that, just to follow up is when we're, an underlying goal since I've been on the commission is streamlining of permits to create housing for, you know, the sanity of the community and efficiency of City Hall, lots of reasons. And that every project in these neighborhood conservation areas needs to go through a special planning commission, design review scrutiny is a burden. And, and I, what I don't quite get, and I guess this, I'm sorry for broadening this out a little bit, but who created the neighborhood conservation areas? I don't know that it's our authority to discuss that, but why isn't the whole city under some kind of neighborhood conservation area? These aren't just, there's not a, a giant historic difference between that part of town and other parts of town. I, I mean, I, there is partially, but not completely. There's a lot of old houses tucked in here and there, they're just outside of these boundaries and are just kind of left out of the loop. And there's a lot of modern homes in these neighborhood conservation areas, you know, that have completely different scrutiny, so.
Go ahead, Judith.
So is the upshot, I, I, I may have heard this from Matt at a previous meeting, and what I'm almost hearing right now is, are you proposing to abolish the neighborhood conservation areas? Or to simply make the review process less burdensome?
As I say, I don't know that we have the authority to abolish neighborhood conservation areas. I'd like to know why they got created. I get it more in the downtown plaza, that's clearly a historic area. However, HSU Cal Poly just came to us with, because of the, the Bank of America building, nothing historic about it. It just really strikes me that it's another impediment to people doing projects in their neighborhoods or on their, you know, ADUs. I did an ADU, I came and I paid the bill and came and, well, I recused myself, my wife sat there and presented. But you guys had nothing to say, it was a nicely designed project, just like the one that we heard last week, you know, the Tuttle Project, beautiful structure. What would we have done besides pick at the trim or something like, and she spent her money and architect time and everybody else, the city staff typed it all up. It was a big burden.
Maybe you could speak to this, David, and then we could try and bring our discussion back to the specific language we're trying to get past here.
Yeah, I would say that my recommendation would be to, to come back to the, the neighborhood conservation areas and maybe the body of policy around the neighborhood conservation areas as a separate item after you get through the July deadline. I do definitely think it's within the, the planning commission's purview to make a recommendation to the city council based on this. And we can, at that time, bring back some of the history of why the neighborhood conservation areas were created largely because of the concentration of older homes. But, you know, maybe, you know, because of, you know, our, our current thinking that those, you know, districts need to be revisited.
Okay. Joel?
Yeah, I, not hearing a lot of support for my proposed change, I'll, I'll withdraw it. It was never my intention of trying to impose another level, you know, burden on people trying to create housing.
And is everyone okay with discussing the conservation areas at a later date, once we get through our current work?
Absolutely. Fine suggestion.
Okay. Great. Then let's move on to the next piece.
I think this one was Judith, Commissioner Mayor.
Okay. I had suggested that first the, the policy should actually indicate who determines the local historic landmark designation in the policy itself. I know that this may change from time to time, but if a member of the public is, is reading it, they probably want to know that. And I get the reason that you indicate the review authority because that, that's actually changed three times or maybe four since I've been on the commission. And, and so that's clear. The addition that I wanted to make had to do with the 50 years old thing. And David's response to my suggestion was that it is possible to designate a historic resource for structures that are less than 50 years old. And indeed, there is language about that in the Secretary of Interior Standards, which have been guidelines for how the city has done these reviews. And in SEQA case law, and so David is not recommending to require that the historic landmarks be 50 years old. I think we can actually separate this out. This is a local policy. SEQA and the, and the Secretary of Interior Standards have different purposes. This is a land use policy indicating that we have some criteria for what could designate a historic resource. It's possible that a SEQA review, for example, based on the Department of Interior Standards, which the state of California also recommends we use, would say, hey, that's a really significant site, even though it's not 50 years old. But if we then apply that to our buildings in Arcata, my concern is that this could actually be a process that would be thrown into the loop as a major obstruction for people to modify their, their property in responsible ways. Because if, if any of those other things kick in and the site is 50 years old, they, they still qualify. But if you have something that's not 50 years old, there may be other ways to protect it, but not as a historic resource designated in our land use code, which is what this is kind of all about. So I, all I was saying is that in addition to all of those other possible qualifying criteria, and we've got a whole list, if we're going to designate something as a historic site or building, it should be at least 50 years old. And my, you know, my, my, I guess the counterproposal I had in my mind is, you know, what if, what if there were a really notable political event that took place in Arcata at a particular location, and someone comes and puts up a memorial there? And a group of people petitioned for that particular location to be designated as a historic resource so that the pile of flowers cannot be dismantled, or, you know, whatever it is. That suddenly, you know, gets into the possibility of a land use consideration that would come before design review. And I, I think there may be other ways to protect those significant sites that don't necessarily come into this set of regulatory actions. So, simply adding that, in addition to the, the basic qualifying thing for a historic resource, is that it be 50 years old.
So your main concern is the 50-year-old requirement? You think all buildings that are going to have a historic designation should be at least 50 years old, and there shouldn't be a world in which there are other reasons?
No, 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 no. I, I, I'm, 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 there, there are other reasons, okay? But we should deal with them in other ways and not necessarily through the land use restrictions, the property restrictions that go along with the designation of a historic resource.
Okay. Does anybody else on the commission share Judith's concerns as stated? Matt, go ahead.
My understanding is that part of the purpose of the city creating a list of potential sites sort of before there's any sort of controversy about the site being replaced is that you'll be able to look at it in a more objective, forward-looking way before, and so I could imagine like a 45-year-old building getting proposed for the list and then being put on it. But I, what I, I think you're worried about is, you know, someone proposes to do something and all of a sudden it's like, oh, my father built this house and here's the old photos that I have in my attic and it's potentially historic, and that that would happen after the proposal. But I, I think that's addressed sort of by the structure of having a list of potential places that the city keeps and that it's sort of more of a binary. Is that, am I understanding it correctly or?
Can you weigh in and clarify this discussion at all?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what Commissioner Simmons is saying is true. You know, we put in a staff comment on the end of this policy that we, you know, can't, couldn't recommend this to the city council. You know, I, I think the commission should, you know, take the action, it feels like is necessary, but we think that it would, you know, run afoul of certain laws that regulate, that are beyond, that supersede our local regulations. I guess the, the best example of a, you know, an event that, you know, is historic that created an immediate historic site is the, is 9/11. The Twin Towers location is a historic location, and that doesn't have to wait to be 50 years old. So, you know, not that we'd have something like that, but there are, you know, structures, you know, that, that could potentially fall into this category of less than 50 years old. It, you know, the, the text of, you know, SEQA guidelines actually in, you know, addresses this as well as case law. So, staff doesn't recommend you adopt it, but I, I think the, you know, a lot has been said on this topic already. I would encourage commissioners to, to take a vote and move on to the next item.
Okay. I hear Judith's concerns about the language. Does anyone else have concerns with the staff recommendation to not change the language here? Okay. Then let's move on. Go ahead, Dilo.
Really quick, just one clarifying question. This first part of the comments refers to who is responsible, which seems sort of like a separate item. I just wanted to make sure that is still captured. If the commission wants to discuss that, I think we could put in, you know, noting that the inventory shall be set by the city council, for example.
Peter?
Yeah, I had exactly the same concern and question.
Okay, so if we can clarify the who by saying city council?
Sounds good. The language already reads the request for designation may be, may be initiated by the owner, city council, planning commission, or the historic landmarks commission. All of that detail about, you know, the process is actually included in the zoning code now. The council is the only body that can formally designate a historic landmark, so if you want that in the policy, yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Sounds like it's kind of covered.
I, I think the reason it would be helpful for it to be in the policy is that for members of the public to have to chase from one set of policies to another just to figure out who's responsible for making a designation is really disconcerting. And if we can be clear in our policies so that that confusion doesn't arrive, that would, that would help.
Then, then if it's not problematic to add city...
The green means a yes?
Yeah.
It's not problematic at all.
Then let's, let's add that clarification that it will be the city council and as is stated elsewhere and move on.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I've got this right. I'm turning this part green, which says, make sure that the policy says it's the city council, and I'm turning this part red. Do I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I believe this was Commissioner Mayor also.
And let, let me see where you are here. I, I know that the land use code does get very specific about the types of changes that can be approved and the types that can't. And there's two parts to this comment as well. First, I, I understand why you don't want to specify who the review authority is, but again, that would be really helpful to put in there, even if it's going to change at some point, the, the public would appreciate knowing. And then, the policy, any exterior modifications or alterations, including changing, changes in materials, elsewhere in the element, the thing that triggers those types of reviews and standards are modifications that actually require a building permit. In this language here, that's not indicated. So it, something as, as simple as painting your building would, would then trigger this regulatory requirement. And I, I think it would be helpful, if we're going to be doing that, to set some kind of a threshold of what is a reasonable kind of, of trigger. David's staff comment responds that it, it's not necessary to say who the review authority is in our general plan, because it's in the zoning ordinance. The second, doesn't have a specific recommendation. I think we should make a specific recommendation. I personally recommend it simply that we specify thresholds and provide examples so that they will not trigger a big review process every time someone wants to paint their historic house.
Matt, I know you had a comment.
Yeah, well, this hadn't occurred to me until just now, but if, if we change who the review authority is and the document that was set now stays the same, the document will actually misinform the public.
Right, right. That's why when we change the review authority, we need to change the, the language of the plan. I understand why you did that.
There's, there's actually multiple review authorities depending on the type of project currently specified in land use code. So you could write every review body if you want to, instead of saying the review authority. I don't think it's, I don't think it's misinforming the public. I think most people are actually going to our land use code to find out what's the specific detail when they're putting a project together. So I, I, again, if you want to make this change, I think you should do it and move on. It's non- It's non-substantive. It's not going to have a huge impact one way or the other. The language as it's currently written is fine. If you wanted to put every review authority in there in its place, that would be fine also. Um, and if you wanted to, if you wanted to add a, the other thing I heard was, you know, having something that says, uh, you know, if it requires a building permit, if you wanted to make that consistent with the other, uh, policy, I think that, um, I would caution you to say generally. Because there may be pro, uh, projects that affect a historic resource that don't trigger a building permit, that would uh, significantly alter that, that historic resource. And so we want to have the ability to, you know, to point to that policy language and say this is why you can't do it.
That sounds really, really reasonable. I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, the painting of the Jacoby Building downtown, for example, that really was painting, but it, you know, it's, it's a big deal. It was a significant thing and that did come before us.
Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, um, one, in terms of review authority, as long as the definition is consistent, I, cause it's used numerous places throughout, uh, this element. And one of my comments was, what, what is it? If it could be anybody, I, I don't care how you define it, it should just be defined. And secondly, um, as Judith's, uh, issue about requiring perhaps a building permit for, uh, alter or any alteration of a historic landmark as that being the threshold. The, this section only talks about landmarks. So it's those ninety-some-odd structures that are on that list. And those have the, the, you know, I think those are the most important historic resources we have. And like, I, I'm sympathetic to David's comment that there could be changes that might have a significant impact on a historic landmark. That don't require a building permit. I can't tell you off the top of my head what those might be, but there theoretically could be some that an architectural historian could say, no, you know, that, that would just really affect the integrity of, of the structure, even though it doesn't require a building permit. So I'm, I'm happy with the language as it currently exists and I'm not, uh, I, I don't agree with Judith's change on that.
Okay, does anyone else have a comment? Can we take a vote? Is, how many commissioners are comfortable with the language as it is? Okay, so let's leave that language as it is, turn it green and move.
Turn it green?
Turn it red, sorry, red.
I'm, I'm wondering that, that language of generally requires a building permit, if that could actually be included? Because I, I think that gives it a, a little more chance to be reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, finesse something in there. I think we'd have to put the caveat that, you know, we have the, uh, ability to, whether it requires a building permit or not, to, you know, to, you know, to get involved.
When you read these, um, the documents that go along with each landmark property, there's specific things that they point out. And as David says, many of them wouldn't trigger a building permit, you know, the type of fencing or it just depends on what was identified as unique and specific to that historic, historic structure.
So I'm not sure where we're landing right now. Are we in support of adding this language about generally requiring a building permit?
I would be a little bit afraid that it might steer somebody towards that concept and it's really not the case.
I, I'm in favor of not adding that additional language, but I'd like to hear what everybody else thinks.
Really what it, it, if you want to, it, it's these ninety-two properties that we're talking about and less, more add to the list. And what the people that own these properties need to know is what specific historic features were in their original document. And that's what they need to preserve. That's what they're required to preserve. If there's something that requires a building permit, they'll be down here working over the counter and being told, well, if you're going to change that, you're altering your historic structure and for sure, that's a red flag. But that's a whole nother conversation.
Is, is there any way to add language that would then refer to the, the criteria in the original designation? Because that, that would also address my concern there.
We, there, many of the early, uh, landmark designations didn't have a whole lot of detail in them. So I'd, um, I'd caution against that as well. Some of the ones that are, are more modern, we've, we've taken a little bit more care and attention, but I honestly can't say that we've completely identified all of the characteristics that one would consider as contributing to the, the historic nature of it. So I'd, I'd be reluctant to suggest that as well.
Okay, so this is kind of the opposite of streamlining. This is the ultimate in discretion.
Absolutely, and I think for historic resources, in particular for designated ones, that's the, you know, that's the policy trade-off that the, you know, city is, has generally accepted. Here, here too for, anyway.
Okay. So are we in agreement? We're gonna leave this then and let's move on to the next item. Okay, whose suggestion was this?
I think this is Commissioner Mayor's as well.
Okay, that, yeah, that is mine indeed. And I think David's response that the city's working with the tribe to refine the language is a good thing. And, um, I think the, the concern that I have is that the way the policy appears to kick in is that it would only be for discretionary projects. And then we'd be relying on, on the, the SEQA trigger for it. And I'm not sure that that provides a sufficient level of protection. So if, if you're working with the tribe to, you know, figure out more appropriate language, that, that's, that's great.
Yeah, and just to put a little bit more detail on that, um, there is a SEQA threshold for, uh, projects that are subject to SEQA. And there is no threshold for, you know, broad threshold for projects that are not subject to SEQA. And so one of the things that we've been working with the tribes to, to do is to identify areas where they have particular concerns and then to try and develop a process whereby even projects that aren't subject to discretion or review in SEQA would have some form of, um, uh, you know, cultural mo, resources monitoring. So that's, those are the discussions we're having right now, just to kind of give you a little bit more insight into where we're, we're hoping to head with, uh, with the Wiat tribe.
Okay, is everyone comfortable with, um, the staff is working on this language and?
Yeah, could I, could I just ask a question about, um, the scope of what you're talking about? I, I, I know that, you know, that we have actually three levels of stuff going on. One would be discretionary projects that would trigger SEQA, you'd at least do an initial study. One would be the normal projects which, um, might have some discretionary aspects. And the other is these streamlined housing projects, including a lot that we're envisioning for the gateway, which would neither trigger SEQA except at the highest level. And in principle would not be discretionary. So those are the projects that I was concerned about there. Is, is your discussion going to be able to differentiate among those different levels?
Yeah, what we're hoping to be able to do is to bring in projects that are just subject to a building permit in areas where they have, you know, uh, you know, uh, heightened concern. Where the tribe has a heightened concern or heightened attention to a particular area. And so that would be a wholly local process. Um, and we've, we're, we're working on what the details of what that would look like. In addition, we're working on, you know, our inadvertent discovery protocol language and a couple of other processes. There are other, um, types of actions that don't have any kind of, uh, you know, permit, review, different types of geotech work that occur throughout the city, for example. Or, uh, many of the, the city's projects that it does, you know, there's no formal review except for authorization at the city council. And so those, those that we have control over are projects, you know, we're able to say, look, we, we're going to commit to working with you. If we're working in one, one of these hotspots, we're going to let you know and you can tell us if you want, you know, monitor there. Um, and so we, we're working to expand the scope of, of cultural resources, notification and monitoring if, if warranted uh, to, you know, projects, not only in these, uh, infill zones where we'd see, you know, potentially larger scale, you know, buildings gone for, that would, you know, go forward as principally permitted, but even just regular small-scale, single-family home or an addition, that sort of thing if they're in a hotspot.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. So, um, I think we're ready to, uh, move on to the next item.
Okay, I think we're into the other issues section. Some of these, I think we've just talked about, including sort of the review authority question. Uh, those are specified in the zoning ordinance. Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is my comment. I think that the, the conversation we had earlier about, um, burdens or barriers to the development we want to encourage is what I'm after here. So I live in a historic house and I've lived there for over, for over forty years. I've worked hard to preserve it and I love it. It is not, it is probably the only old Victorian in Arcata that is not on that list that we have. There's a reason for that. When I first got it in the nineteen, uh, we moved in in December of seventy-nine. In the nineteen eighties, early nineteen eighties, I wanted to put solar collectors on my roof. And I really got scared that if I designated the house as historic, which I wanted to do when I first heard about it, that I would be prevented from putting solar collectors on my house. And, you know, that seems, these are solar hot water collectors. They're bigger than the photovoltaic collectors. And, uh, I, so we chose not to be a historic house and we put solar collectors on our roof. Uh, and nobody told us not to. So, you know, I, I come from that example to the same kind of conversation we've been having here. That is, it's great to preserve the historic nature of Arcata and these old homes. But does it get in the way of changes we want to see? It, it doesn't, does it provide an extra burden and obstacle to the kind of changes we want to see? Energy conservation measures, I mean, it's pretty restrictive. Energy conservation measures, uh, ADUs, infills. There's a house on Twelfth and I that just went for sale. It has a real nice, big, open lot next to it. It could probably have a duplex or a triplex, uh, built there. What would we say? It is a historic house. I don't know. But, um, my fear is that by being overly restrictive, we are handcuffing ourselves for changes that we really want to see. So, I, I say this to be provocative and to hear what you have to say. You know, that was my history from the old days.
Thank you, Peter. You'll probably be hearing from the city about those solar collectors soon.
You know, it, it, it's, it, it is really interesting and, and again, I feel like kind of the old fart here, but we, we had a lot of discussions about issues with regard to, um, energy conservation for changing out windows and roof lines and stuff like that. And it has come up again and again, and I, I think one of, one of the things is for, for the historic landmarks that have already been designated, yeah, you look at those features that are significant. But the, the Secretary of the Interior's standards themselves for historic preservation have recently really taken on that issue. They, they want historic, um, buildings to be used, not abandoned. And they, they've actually done a, a full hundred and eighty-degree turn on, um, features that can allow old buildings to continue in active use and to, you know, do the things we want them to as far as energy goes. Then they set this whole slew of standards which can drive you crazy. But there, there's, you know, a whole profession now of people who figure out how to make historic buildings ad, adapt with energy efficiency standards that kind of take that into account and but yeah, I mean, I, that's, that's my concern too. If we, if we, if we become so restrictive that we're making it impossible for people to reasonably use the buildings that we'd like to see preserved, we kind of have a problem. But we also, also have some really great guidance coming from places that the city has decided to pay attention to. So.
Go ahead, Joel.
Um, I'm wondering whether this is a tempest in a teapot. We have ninety-two landmarks. I don't have the table in front of me. Um, and David, I think, mentioned we have eight thousand structures. Is that, I don't know how many thousand we have in Arcata. So, even if these landmarks or other potentially historic structures do have some requirements that are more restrictive than somebody that's not historic. You know, I, to me, it, it's kind of a, a fair trade to preserve the architectural history of Arcata. Cause, you know, where would we be without, you know, if, if there are no Victorians here, we all had, you know, more modern buildings.
I, I think too, just to add to the conversation, um, in the transition here, that the city of Arcata has been very supportive of trying to, you know, both allow those, uh, energy efficiency upgrades and, and, uh, adaptive reuse of properties. We have a lot of, uh, code language in our land use code that, um, allows for that. And the council has recently made, like within the last three years, has made two changes to, uh, various ordinances to promote the, you know, feasible reuse of, of historic resources.
Can I just throw in one little piece of this?
Please, Dan, yeah.
My house is on this list. I would like to put aluminum roof on, on the house. My roof is shot. I'd like to put solar panels on. I can't do it till I replace the roof. And I don't want to put asphalt shingles on there. So I'll be down discussing with whoever I can, how they feel about the, the metal roof on a historic, you know, listed as Victorian-era house. It's, it's a tough one. But, uh, I feel like there's a healthy discussion to be had there. And I do have a mother-in-law unit built on the property that, that, there was zero issues about that. I think state law supersedes local law and stuff like that, right? Solar panels and mother-in-law units. So there's a lot that I can do. The things that I can't do are drastically modify the exterior, which I would never want to do anyway. You know, it's a charming look.
I, I think this conversation is interesting. I'm not sure, um, part of the concern with the other issues list is, is I'm not sure what the endpoint is on this discussion. So just noting.
I'm not sure either. However, for some changes, there need to be, um, less of a barrier. I mean, uh, Dan alluded to Andrea Talo having to come here to get her house approved. It was a perfectly fine house. There was no question about it. I'm sure it could have been approved at the ministerial level. But it wasn't because we have this zone, you know? because we have this zone, you know?
And yet she sailed through our discussion here.
She did by paying a lot of money and, and taking extra time to do it.
So I'd offer that a lot of the discussion that we're having, again, is in the zoning code. And there's, what I'm hearing is a desire of the planning commission to revisit the zoning code. I think that the policy would support changes to the zoning code and we can dig into that again. It's been in place the way that it is, which was a step down from the way it used to be where everything had to go to the planning commission. We delegated a lot of the authority to, you know, the zoning administrator or even to staff level review about, I think it was in 2017, 2016, or something like that. And so if that's something that you want to take another look at now that you've had experience with, you know, implementing that part of the code, you know, I can tell you at that time, people were really afraid of what was going to happen if we took these decisions and handed them to staff. And so, you know, that's, it's part of the reason why it's currently structured the way that it is. If you're feeling comfortable at this point, you want to revisit those, we can revisit those in the code. I think that the current policy language would support you to do that.
Okay, but that would mean bringing this back as an expanded?
Not this. Coming back at some point in the future and looking at the zoning ordinance. You're going to have to look at the zoning ordinance next. There's a lot of changes that you're making in the general plan. When you make general plan changes, you have to then go back and look at the zoning implementation, make sure that it's consistent. And so the work that we're doing right now is setting up the policy structure to allow us to come back and implement that policy structure. That will happen in the zoning ordinance and land use code, in the, you know, coastal zoning, zoning ordinance and in the gateway form base code. And so gateway form base code you'll be looking at, it's going to be, the draft is coming out in June. You'll start looking at that. We're going to come back around in the beginning of next year and start looking at zoning amendments to become consistent with the, the changes that you just made to the, to the general plan. So I'd suggest you get through this, move on to the next part of your meeting, except that the, the language as it's currently written will facilitate that future work.
Is that, is that everyone agreeable to that? Or at least any opposed, I should say? Okay, next item.
So that completes the review of the historic resources section. I believe the circulation was next on your agenda, my understanding from your conversation from our last meeting.
I, I think that's right. I would like to call for just a three-minute bio break.
Okay.
If everyone's okay with that, we're halfway through the meeting. Okay, I'm assuming that means we are back. David, can you give us just a refresh on where we're picking back up now?
Yeah, so the, we're now into the bike rack items, starting with the circulation element. And I've got the first, we previously made it all the way through the, several of the policy pitch. I think we're on the next, this is the next one that we have before us.
Okay. Is this you, Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, fire away.
Yeah, so if you guys can take yourselves all the way back to the circulation element, there's a section in there called functional classifications of street system. And it lists, you know, different kinds of streets, right? We have arterials and neighborhood streets. And the, the purpose of listing them out differently like that is this idea that you have different priorities for those different streets, right? Some are going to move cars really quickly on and off freeways. Some are going to be slower because they're for neighborhoods. And I personally believe that that functional classification is a little bit outdated and actually prioritizes movement of cars over safety and also just pleasant living, right? And so I suggested this language that would get rid of having the list of streets and just say, we are going to prioritize safety on all streets, right? All streets. So, so part of it is if you look at a map of where car accidents and particularly traffic violence against pedestrians happen, it's the, it's the arterials and the streets where we say, we're going to prioritize cars moving fast over people where those accidents all happen. And that's not an accident, right? And so I, I think our policy should be saying that we're going to prioritize safety over these other values. As an alternative, if you, and it's a very long, this was before we tried to really shrink our comments. And so I, I was a little long-winded. As an alternative, I said we could keep the functional classification, but then just add the language, all streets within Arcata city limits, starting there. And so that's sort of a weaker version of this proposal, but that is the proposal.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Go ahead, Judith.
I, I get your point about not liking the functional classification. However, it is so commonly used and it is so clearly understood in the public works profession and in terms of the complete streets movement as well, that I, I, if we were going to modify this, I would go for your second alternative. There, there, there are good reasons not to traffic calm some streets in Arcata. Slow speeds are, are different than traffic calming. So I, if we use your second alternative, I just say, I would just change it to slow speeds will be prioritized on, on city streets without saying all city streets. I, 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 I don't want to dump the functional classification designations altogether. They are actually quite useful and there are funders who really want to see them.
Did you want to do a negative vote on the second proposal?
Yeah. Does anyone have a problem with adding the language under B and maintaining the rest of the language regarding the classifications? Everyone okay with that suggestion? Dan, go ahead.
Well, Judith, are you suggesting even that line that says, the last of the red highlighted section that says, "Slow speeds and traffic calming will be prioritized on all city streets?"
What, what I was saying is actually to modify that part. Slow speeds will be prioritized on city streets and actually get rid of the "all."
So I, I totally understand that there's a difference between slow speeds and traffic calming, but I, I actually think traffic calming can be more important than just putting a lower speed limit on a street quite often. People often just drive the speed that they feel they can. And so I actually think that both are important there. And with complete streets, I would, I would, I know they use the functional system, but I would assume that they're usually in favor of more traffic calming and adding bike lanes and that sort of thing. That's sort of the goal of complete streets.
Yeah, but they, I mean, they, they're very much tied to those functional classifications where they're, you know, there are different standards for streets that have different uses. I mean, you, you, you don't, you don't want things to go on, on a truck route in terms of traffic calming that you can do on a street with a 5,000-pound limit, for example, you know?
Peter, go ahead.
I think Matt's, I, I'm a cyclist. I, I ride a bike all over the city. And I like that last sentence. I would support it.
And just to be clear, Matt, from your proposal, the option two would be to add that language under B while maintaining the classification system. Is there, Joel, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm going to display my ignorance. I was not on the commission when this first came up and maybe you discussed it. And I'm certainly not a traffic or circulation expert, but is traffic calming a term of art with a discreet meaning?
I feel like this is a staff question more than a fellow commissioner question, but I could give it my best shot. Or you go ahead, David.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also not a traffic engineer, but it is a term of art. And there's a, you know, body of design that follows complete streets principles. And it's essentially to make every street accessible and safe for all modes of, of mobility.
Okay, given that, is anyone opposed to adding Matt's language to the, this section of policy? Okay, then let's.
So we're talking about B?
B, correct.
Okay.
Let's make that change.
I had a lot to say about circulation. Okay, I actually, I meant to email you this. I actually think we discussed this topic already. And I don't, I don't know exactly if it was two separate things that one got passed and one didn't, but we've had the level of service conversation.
We definitely did.
And so I would just vote to do whatever we said at that previous meeting.
I think we voted to deprioritize level of service, something along those lines. And let's just make this section consistent with that prior recommendation.
The key word was deprioritize. Yeah.
Okay. Make it pink.
We don't have pink in our classification system.
Okay.
This is mine. And it's another one that I think we might have already done based on another commissioner's proposal, which was just to add the language saying that there is a 2023 transit development plan that is about to be adopted into our current, it's just a reference to another document.
Excuse me. I think the reason why I may have put this into this section, well, yeah, we probably didn't get to it. One thing I would note, we're trying to go through and, and where we have references to documents that get updated periodically is to, you know, make reference to, you know, this, this document, which gets revised periodically and/or to move it entirely out of the language and say, you know, just reference the, the process for updating. So I'll just note that for the commission's review.
Okay, whose was this next item? Are we still with you, Matt?
I think it was mine unless someone else wants to.
Fire away.
Yeah, so, and forgive me for using red for additions. I don't know what was wrong with me the day that I wrote this. But the two sentences that I would add are about deprioritizing class three bike routes and instead prioritizing class four bike lanes. For folks in the know, class four is where there's something separating you from the road. So you're not, you're not in a little path without, yeah.
Physical barrier.
Thank you. Exactly. Those are better.
Can we see that proposed language? I'm sorry, we? And you had something to add, David? Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, so it's not, are there any opposed?
Yeah. Is anyone opposed to that language addition? Okay. Moving on.
Okay, I believe this was you as well, Commissioner Simmons.
So I, I think all this is, is deleting language that has to do with level of service elsewhere in the document. My original proposal wasn't to deprioritize level of service, but to abolish it. And so that was the purpose here. I, I don't know if staff has thoughts about how to make this align with deprioritize. I'm also, since we already voted to deprioritize rather than abolish, I think this is less of a necessary change.
Can staff work to just make this consistent with the previous recommendation to deprioritize level of service?
Yep.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay, great.
We got a great new word.
You know that saying about if they give a monkey a keyboard, he'll eventually type out something smart? Okay.
While your six is another, like, very similar, just another place where level of service comes up. And it just make, I would propose just make consistent with the rest of the document.
So same as above for six, staff can make consistent with de-prioritizing level of service?
Yeah.
Okay, so meaningfully our discussion now is item seven and was issue as well Matt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so a lot of the times, so this policy is about critical transportation access, right? And a lot of the times, the same designs that make a road easier for a fire truck to move quickly down are road designs that make the road less safe all the rest of the time. And so I added a sentence here talking about sort of balancing the ease and speed of emergency vehicles with just general safety of those streets. Because you can sort of ironically and tragically make a road less safe in the intent of making emergency access vehicles get there a little bit quicker. Yeah.
Does anyone have any comments or questions there? Go ahead Judith.
Yeah, that may be true, but I think that our road designers do that balancing act frequently anyway. And by putting it in here on a policy level in this way, we could inadvertently, inadvertently and unduly limit the opportunity to save lives in an emergency. So I'd rather just leave that language out and, and, and not put that trade off up at a policy level in this part of the plan. There was, there was a suggestion that came up and I think it was from, from Colin Fisk that had to do with in purchasing emergency vehicles, get smaller ones so that they, they would not dictate road design. That made a lot more sense to me and it serves a very similar purpose, but I, I would prefer not to see the red underline language at a policy level in this location.
Can you give me a, just, can you give us just a quick example of the kind of thing you're thinking of here, Matt?
Yeah, so let's say you want to put a protected bike lane in, that's going to narrow the road and so emergency vehicles might not be able to go as quickly down that road in the future. But the protected bike lane is protecting people all day long, right? And so there's a, there's a trade off happening and so that's why I use language like that weighing should happen in these decisions. I'm not saying we, we don't make it possible for fire trucks to get to buildings. I'm just saying that you should think about both sides of that, that coin.
Yeah, one of the things to think about there, I think something like 10 times as many people are killed in traffic accidents as fires. And so if we're trying to prioritize safety, that would be something to keep in mind. Peter?
Did we adopt that, that small fire truck plank?
I think it was a public comment from Colin Fisk.
Oh, it was adopted into one of your policy changes?
Yeah, I thought so. In light of that, I think this wording is fine. I mean, we've already committed to smaller fire trucks and this isn't saying that they don't have access. It's saying we're weighing one against the other.
Okay, um, go ahead Dan.
Almost just like a reminder to consider that concept as well. I'm asking also, Matt, is there, is this a new theory that's out there and our traffic engineers maybe aren't up to speed on this concept or something? I mean.
I, I think with a lot of road safety improvement projects, one of the complaints that you often get is from emergency responders that it could slow down their response time. And I think in general, we just sort of, I, I don't want to say we, I think some cities just sort of take that word as final without doing any sort of weighing of the, of the two things. And, and that's, that's all I'm suggesting here is, is a weighing, right? So when a, when a safety improvement is proposed, it's not immediately stricken just by, yeah.
I think it's just a sense of revisiting some of the thinking that's just been sort of accepted. I feel comfortable with this additional language. It sounds like Peter's in support of that as well. Does anyone have a problem or express any opposition to that? Okay. Okay, item eight.
I thi, I think we can just turn the screen.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. So moving on to item nine, is this still you Matt?
Yeah, and I, we just had news break on ANM RTS. All right, and so I, this policy might be already a little bit out of date, but it was just instead of the word maintain to have improved in there.
I think that's a good policy change.
Is anyone opposed to the change to improve with the AMRTs? Okay. Green. Item 10. Not you Matt. Does, who made this policy change proposal?
Like it, it's a good policy. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm blanking. It's a really good policy proposal. I don't know, does anyone have any problems with this language?
Is anyone concerned about adding this language, this change? Not seeing any concerns. Okay, item 11.
I, I, 11 is, we, we are already doing that. Or not merging, but the agreement that was just entered into.
Been addressed.
I, I think this is maybe still a relevant policy change if the planning commission wishes to make this the, the, what is going on currently between Humboldt Transit Authority and the AMRTs is that HTA will maintain our buses. We're entering a contract for them to maintain our buses, re-entering that contract. And then taking that contracting one step further and having HTA manage the drivers. So they'll be managing the drivers for our buses. They're still our buses, it's still our separate system, it's still our service. And so if you wish this to be part of the policy language to consider merging, I, I would suggest you go ahead and make this, this change.
Go ahead Judith.
There, there were a number of comments, I think, in, in a public comment from Una Smith of HCOG that, that went into the various bodies involved. They all stopped short of using the term merging and I, I would prefer to have those words of enhanced coordination with regional transportation and transit bodies and use the language that she suggested rather than using the term merge, which is really, really tricky in part because it depends on entities that are not the city rather than the city's actions ourselves.
Go ahead.
I don't know if there's some sort of compromise of coordinate with and potentially merge in the future that we could do or?
I would, I would leave it at coordinate with because there, there's some serious downsides with a total merger as well. It means that the city actually loses control of the whole thing. And the nice thing about having our, our own bus system, at least in name, is it's ours. So.
How about language something to the effect of, and I'm going to ask that you, if you approve this, that you allow us to, you know, craft this outside of the meetings, we're not developing policy on the fly, but something to the effect of, of the city shall, you know, evaluate evaluate changes to, you know, city bus service that, you know, prioritizes increasing, you know, service capacity, including the, you know, potential merger with Humboldt Transit Authority or another regional transit system.
Is everyone, everyone okay with that kind of an approach? Okay, acceptable.
Uh, this one's me. It's just a policy in support of microtransit, which is, you know, smaller vans going to places, particularly rural places.
Can I comment on that?
Oh, sorry, go ahead Judith.
I, it, it, it would make sense to me to refer to the, the cities shall investigate the possibility because it could be that those alternative services wouldn't actually be operated by an MRTS, but by somebody else. And so I, I'd appreciate just saying the, the city should investigate it and maybe in coordination with regional transportation.
I'm fine with that change.
Bodies.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. Thumbs up, moving on.
Did I get this right? Replace study with?
The important thing there was we're not putting it on, on, on the bus, it's the city.
Adding the city shall investigate.
In coordination with regional bodies.
Okay, so.
We, we get ANM RTS out of the language.
Got it, okay. So study wasn't the issue, it was?
Yeah, it was multiple party.
Okay. The city.
13 is just another level of service one. I'm sorry, there were so many.
It's okay, if we can move through them quickly, then that's good.
Uh, so, so this needs to be consensified with the other level of service language? Is that what I'm hearing?
Mm-hmm, consistent with de-prioritization. De-prioritizing?
14 is similar. I had specific language suggested, but it use de-prioritize on 14 however you would, you would want.
15 too.
Wait, wait a second, there, there was a comment on if congestion occurs where, if congestion occurs, it shall be welcome? I'm not willing to have that in there.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is instead of that language, use the lens of de-prioritize. Most of these are, were written assuming we would not have level of service, right? And so instead of doing that, use the language of de-prioritize to.
Make consistent with the effort to de-prioritize.
Okay, so we, so we actually want to red highlight that, not green highlight it because you've already dealt with it.
Yeah, pink, which is, or.
And we'll make sure to have that congestion not being welcomed not be included. Not in there.
We do not welcome it.
Actually, rereading 15, would you guys be okay with just making that language change? It's calm traffic everywhere instead of only in certain areas that we deem worthy of having safe streets.
Any commissioners opposed to traffic calming throughout the city? Unseen.
16 is another, I just want to delete that language that encourages the, you know, uh, through vehicle traffic, but I, I think it's another make consistent with de-prioritize.
Yeah, level of service. Go ahead Peter.
Do we want to say something positive about the slow streets movement? Do we want to say this is shown to be effective? At least mention it?
Go ahead Judith.
You know, a, a lot of these shorthand terms that people kind of sort of know what they are right now are, are going to change by 2045 and they're going to be, that they're not going to mean much and I would, I would prefer not to refer to movements in the plan. Because that, that's a shorthand that can easily be misinterpreted over time.
Okay, take it out, say closing streets has been shown to be effective.
Yeah, closing streets has also been shown to not be effective and to lengthen travel times and to lengthen trips and to lengthen vehicle miles traveled. So I'm, I'm not sure that we should include that in there at all.
Go ahead Christian.
Can we just change, rather than movement, it's, they're now established programs. In fact, I was mentioning it earlier in regards to being in San Francisco this past weekend, seeing it in action and it is, and it's, it's, it's a city program essentially at this point, so.
Slow streets?
Yeah, slow streets, yeah, yeah. And it's all, you know, all the demarcation and so forth and it's all no traffic and, yeah. And so it's an established program, no longer a movement. And how about something similar like that rather than, you know, take away the movement language and call it a program?
Or a concept.
Or concept.
Philosophy, something.
Go ahead Judith.
I, I, I'd prefer to not have a, an overall policy about closing streets. In, in part because that then creates an impetus to actually make movement and mobility more difficult if you, if you push it as sort of a blanket program. And if what we're talking about here is mobility, then I, I'm, I'm not sure that a, a blanket statement like that is what we want to put in here.
I, I've, yeah, go ahead Peter.
We're only, i- if this really comes true, we would be closing a very few number of streets. It, it wouldn't, it wouldn't drastically affect car traffic. And I can tell you also in San Francisco, when I lived there short, for a short time, having a street closed is wonderful. It was wonderful. Bikers, skaters, rollers, you know, walkers in the middle of the street, it's great.
Yeah, I've seen the same thing in Laguna Beach and, and San Francisco and around. What's the general? Um, what's the general temperature on this include, um, is anyone opposed, anyone else besides Judith? I should say, opposed to the slow street language?
You know, the, the, the same rationale that planners have been working, um, for the last twenty years with regard to cul-de-sacs and how cul-de-sacs actually reduce mobility can also apply to the overuse of, um, street closures. And I think that having the possibility of street closures open to the city, um, in very specific instances is something that, that we already have without this policy in here. Um, to have a broad policy with regard to, yeah, it's really great to close streets in residential neighborhoods. In effect, what you're doing is you're creating the same, um, immobilizing effects that, um, a street pattern based on cul-de-sacs has with all of the downsides of that in terms of, um, even convenience for pedestrians. Unless we also have open, open streets for other modes of access and that policy doesn't include that. I, 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 I just think that if we're, if we're, if we're, if we're, if we wanna create a city of cul-de-sacs and closed streets.
I, I guess I just, how does a closed street?
Yeah, what are you visualizing as a closed street?
Where are you visualizing a closed street? Unless we have it on?
The city should develop a policy and, and take a look. I, I don't think that's the.
I mean, it, it seems like, go ahead Christian.
Yeah, I think it, it's, it's, it's the intent to reduce vehicle vehicular traffic, not pedestrian or bicyclist or skateboarders or somebody who wants to dance in the streets for that matter. Um, it's, it's really to inhibit through traffic, vehicular traffic, and calm the streets that allows then u- additional usage on top of parking, but.
A, a cul-de-sac is specifically a way to make sure cars can get to a quiet street because it doesn't go through, but it's, it's focusing on cars over people, right, whereas this is specifically taking cars out of a place. Pedestrians could get through a walking street just as quickly as they could through a, you know, a street with cars on it. Actually, they could probably get there quicker cuz they have more of the road to use.
We, we've taken a vote on this and we're, we're continuing to talk about it, but go ahead Dan.
Well, I'm just thinking if we could just put this in as this, as a nudge like we did earlier on the emergency vehicle thing, just as like to, something for our traffic engineers, not us, to consider implementing.
Well, I mean, that's what would be, right, would be a recommendation for the city to work on, so.
So, so it would be a consider, not, you know, let's, let's, let's run and do it. And that, that's different wording.
Well, it's been, if it's an impl- implementation measure, then it's something that we're going to, uh, revisit. Right?
Yeah, if you, if you put, if you adopt a language as it's currently written, the city would say that slow streets are the thing we want and the implementation measure would say we're gonna develop a slow streets program. If you adopt what Commissioner Mayor is suggesting is that slow streets might be what the city should support, we need to investigate, and the implementation measure would read, "The city shall, uh, evaluate, uh, or investigate the slow streets program." So, I think that.
That's where I'm at. I'm, it is, I'm with Mayor on that one.
You, you want more thought put into it?
Pardon me, I want the city engineers to consider it as an option.
Well, that, that, if that's what you want, that's what we, that's the implementation measure.
Yeah, this would have, this would, uh, basically direct staff to develop a slow streets program, um, as it's currently written. We would say, "We acknowledge slow streets are important, now go develop a program to identify where, how, and when, and what the design parameters would be and those sorts of things."
Comfortable with that, Dan?
Well, if, if on the other hand, we say, um, I don't know, I've, I don't remember how we did it with the, we were stuck on the emergency vehicle thing earlier, and we got through it by just saying, "Consider it." Consider this new approach.
Go ahead Joel, hold on Judith, go ahead Joel.
I'm with Dan on this one, uh, based on, you know, Judith seems, Ju- Judith's comments that, um, that there may be two sides to that coin and, and we, I think we need more information. So, I'd welcome language that would have us, uh, have the city consider implementation of that program, but not commit to it as a policy in the general plan at this time.
But if it, if we pass it as an implementation measure, doesn't that mean that the city is gonna then develop the plan and bring it back to us for consideration?
Yeah.
So, is that not what we want the city to do?
These are, yeah, th- these are, you know, both going to have the effect of, you know, putting the time and energy into, uh, considering before adopting. And then it will go through a public review process, so whether you put consider in here or not, there's still another chance to, to have a bite at the apple. What I'm hearing is a couple commissioners wanna add the word consider. Staff thinks it's a reasonable, uh, amendment to the way that this currently reads.
Okay, is everyone comfortable if we add consider to this piece?
Yeah, that was already what was gonna happen, so it's fine.
Okay, no, no opposed. Okay, let's, let's make that change and adopt.
Is everyone comfortable with this one?
Yes. Is anyone not comfortable? Okay, eighteen.
Uh, this is just changing the class of the bike lane to be that protected bike lane.
Which I think you already adopted in the prior policy.
I think this is another make consistent.
So, so is, is that then redundant?
Um, I can't weigh in on whether it's redundant at this point. I mean, we have a, a separate policy that identifies it.
Is the commission okay with this language?
I am. I'll just point out that class four bike lanes take a lot of space. They're really good, but they take space and we are saying, which I, I support, we are saying that there will be less space for cars and more space for bikes.
Okay, nods of approval. Item nineteen, who's this?
This is another one I could've sworn we already did, uh, about perking and managing for reduced perking demand.
Yeah, we did, we did discuss this.
Yeah, I apologize, uh, sometimes with the cut and paste, um, you know, things have gotten.
No worries, what's, what's our next?
Not sure why it's not showing on here, but. Uh, this one, I just saw this one down below as well, I think.
Yeah, and the one down below, and I, I think we also have done before.
Yep.
Yep, smart meter, et cetera, recommendation.
Yep, we'll verify.
Okay, number twenty then.
Yeah, so this is, um, so B would allow you to add a new lane of travel, um, widening a street along property frontage for a travel lane, and by travel, I think they mean car lane. Um, and so discouraging road widening, uh, by deleting B. Um, and then two, uh, well, first, changing off-site traffic with off-site mobility impacts, to think about all impacts, not just traffic. Um, and then, "One of the measures may include a reduction in the size or density of the development." Uh, and I, I don't think we should be, um, I, I don't think we should be trying to reduce density for the purposes of, of traffic, if that makes sense.
Anyone opposed to those policy suggestions? Okay.
Twenty-one is just replacing the word "traffic" with "mobility."
Everyone okay with that? Okay.
Uh, I wanted to note too, real quick on that, that there was a recommendation to change the title of this, uh, element to mobility as well, so that, that has also been made.
Uh, and then twenty-two, uh, just adds language about, uh, funding of transit through perking meter revenues to go up with the perking meters that we already talked about. Um, something nice you can do for people who choose not to drive a car is fund their transit with perking meter revenues.
What are, uh, what are the parking meter, meter revenues now being used for? Do they go into the general fund or?
Yeah, um, so, you know, I think, uh, staff would probably recommend adding to the extent possible to the end, to the end of this or something, something that, you know, dumps it down a little bit because where, where those revenues go into the, um, they either go into paying for the service, so some of the money is going to pay for the service, and then some of the money is going into general fund. And where they go into general fund, you know, we, we can't necessarily commit them through policy. Um, we can indicate through policy that we'd like to, you know, fund those kinds of, um, fund those kinds of activities, free bus or reduce bus service fees, recognizing that we're generating revenues, uh, on this other side, but you can't explicitly link them. We had a similar discussion around parking tickets, uh, I think.
I'm fine with the language to the extent feasible being added.
Everyone okay with that?
You, you know, I, I, I kinda like the idea, um, of, of not making that explicit and leaving that to city council, um, partly because it gets into a bunch of fiscal stuff that could have some weird consequences, and it also kinda reminds me of, you know, funding health education with, um, cigarette taxes, um, which creates then a, a weird, um, incentive structure for things that we might actually want to discourage than being locked into the funding cycle for something that we wanna encourage. So, I'd, I'd, I'd rather just leave the funding transit through parking meter revenues out and let the council deal with that at that level.
What's the broader, uh, group think? Leave this language in to make the connection to parking meters?
I love the concept of linking them. It, if it happened though, if it was actually possible, it seems like it would be a great bragging rights for the city and for all the users. The, every time you put money in those parking meters, you're paying for bike lanes, is really cool. If it's not feasible though, or too complicated as, uh, Commissioner Mayor's bringing up, I, I yield.
I think the "where feasible" is a caveat that, that gets us there, is, is everyone comfortable with that language? Okay. Sorry, go ahead Peter.
Um, can I just ask a general interest question? How soon do you think we might have paid parking on the plaza? I mean, is that, is that a year from now? Is that ten years from now?
Sorry, I, I really can't comment on that, I'm sorry, and I don't know, um, that there's even an active, um, you know, anyone actively engaged in, in moving that initiative forward. Uh, we've discussed having parking meters on the plaza, you know, multiple times during my tenure with the city and multiple times before I got here. It's a, you know, uh, it's a, it's an ongoing discussion, I guess I would say. So, I, I can't say that there's an ongoing initiative to have parking meters on the plaza with a specific timeframe where they're gonna be there.
Stay tuned. Um, where do we, so now we're moving into public facilities and the infrastructure element?
Um, no, I think after, uh, circulation, the idea was to move back into, uh, land use.
Land use, right. And just, we're, we're moving into our home stretch here, so, just to keep us all aware of the time.
Um, okay, hold on, this is. Okay, um. Okay, uh, it looks to me like the we cleared everything from the policy pitches with the exception of, uh, this one that is grayed out, which means we're putting that off and discussing it later. All of the policies that are in the land use element, um, are, that are left are these ideas for discussion. Um, so I wanted to identify that for the planning commission. There was also a, uh, request at the last meeting to discuss more of these proposed designation changes. And so, I guess before we jump in, it'd be worth having a conversation around whether you wanna stick with the policy and, um, or the, the map.
What do people think? We're on policy? Do we wanna stick with policy or do we wanna make a shift in our discussion flow?
I think it's too late to start talking about the particular zones that we're going to look at. I think we need to have sort of fresh eyes to look at that.
So, that's a vote for sticking with policy discussion?
Yeah, I agree.
Can we have a date when we will actually get to that map, please?
Um, I mean, I'm not sure, honestly.
The, uh, next.
I think what's difficult is there's just a certain amount of uncertainty. We put things on and we get as far as we get, and sometimes we don't get to things.
I think this may be the ninth meeting that we've postponed that discussion, except for those two particular sites.
I don't know that it's being postponed at this meeting, this is part of the bike rack, and so it's really just a question of which part of the bike rack you're gonna go into first. If you wanted to establish a specific date, um, the, uh, June thirteenth and the June twenty-seventh are currently scheduled for quote-unquote bike rash, rack issues. Um, you've previously identified specific topics that you're gonna take up in, in, you know, bike rack sessions, so if you wanted to say, "Look, on the thirteenth is when we're gonna come back to this," that would be, or if you wanna say on the June twenty-seventh, um, those would be two first dates I would recommend.
I, I think I may be the only person who provided specific comments on those, um, site by site by exhibit. I will not be at either of the June meetings, and I would really like to do it, um, in the month of May.
Well, what does the commission think? I mean, what we could do is put that issue on the top of the bike rack, and then as we work through our schedule and come back to bike rack, as we've been doing regularly, we'll get that next.
Which would be the twenty-third of May.
Twenty-third of May, and at that meeting you have the health element, which is a new element. It's not very long, um, but it is new, and the design element, um, which has some changes, and then the impacts on the Creamery District, uh, and, uh, buildings, the Creamery Building, uh, and then the effect on businesses is the gateway specific concern, uh, that we'll be addressing between now and then. We've also got a special, um, or a, a public engagement, um, set for the sixteenth of May, uh, at the Creamery Building to hear from folks in the Creamery District, and so we'll be bringing that information to you at that time. So, that's, that's a possibility too, if you wanted to designate the, uh, land use map, uh, for the May twenty-third uh, as the first item to get to into the bike rack after health and design.
What's everyone think? Designate that?
I think it's gonna take at least. I think it's going to take at least a full meeting to go through all those. So I think we ought to start at the beginning and, you know, designate that next meeting to be those zoning issues.
Well, we're not going to change the schedule. That is part of our format that we agreed on. We're not going to re-change the schedule. I think the best we can do is to say, the next time we get back to bike rack issues, this will be at the top of the list. And so I'm looking for sort of commission opinion on if that's agreeable to everyone to prioritize that map discussion on the top of the next bike rack. Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, I think it should be the top priority thing. I hear from the public that one of the major issues is the land use and the zoning, and I think we should prioritize that.
Okay, vote to prioritize, Dan. Christian? Okay, then let's put that at the top of the bike rack for that next discussion. Yes. Okay, so then for the rest of this meeting, can we stick with policy and see if we can?
Yeah, we've got the first policy up on the board here.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Yeah, that's mine. This, I'm trying to remember. LU 1K talked about support and revitalize other existing neighborhood and commercial activity areas, and it encouraged improvement of parking. Do we want to do that? I don't have a specific wording here, but I would suggest we could just eliminate that. And also, do we want to encourage the conversion of parking lots into other activities? Housing, walkways, playgrounds. Let me just say, I walk around Arcata. We have a lot of parking lots. They are usually empty, almost totally empty. That's a huge amount of asphalt and area assigned to cars that is useless. So I would encourage us to, you know, meet this parking head-on.
So we're going to have to come up with some language, right?
I'll be happy to do that if you want, or David?
Yeah, no, I'm not going to ask you to do more. What I would suggest is if you want to indicate, I think I understand a little bit better what the direction is here. The commission wants to move forward on these items that don't have specific policy language. I would encourage you to direct staff to draft something that encompasses your concepts or ideas.
Thanks.
Anyone opposed?
So encouraged, I think.
So did this one pass?
This is mine as well. Took me a while to recognize it. Well, as I say here, we have, we have talked about this issue before, that there are these density bonuses that developers can accrue, which means they can build to densities that are larger, higher than are in our policies. So I think it would behoove us to have densities that are reasonable enough so that when these density bonuses come into play, we end up with, in the end, a reasonable density. So that, you know, we don't end up with a density that is outlandish. And I don't know exactly, I mean, you know, you all, David certainly, and Dilo know much more about this than I do. But it kind of scared me that the density bonus could increase the density way beyond what we as a city want to see happen.
Do you want to weigh in on that, David?
I think we added some language about the density bonus more generally in the tables, just recognizing that it is, you know, is a factor. I think that the commission trying to reduce density to game out whether or not somebody would come in with a density bonus is, it's going to be a fool's errand. I mean, I'll just be blunt with you. I don't think we're going to be able to effectively justify why we're reducing those densities. And then in addition, the state actually requires for us to have a certified housing element, that we have to have certain density thresholds that, you know, you know, at a minimum, so that our higher density zoning districts actually are higher density. So I would recommend against going down. I understand there's, you know, concern, like, well, what if a developer came in and, you know, got an 80% density bonus? That's a possibility. But I think we should set our standards based on, you know, the density limits that we want to see. You can, to the second point about LU 3A, we regulate not just the development potential of buildings or properties, not just through density, but through other development standards. And so I would offer that, you know, those other development standards are going to be the, you know, the upper thresholds for most development. So staff would recommend against making a change relative to this concern.
By which you mean that there's other elements in the code that would put an upper limit without specifically being referenced to density?
There are, there's maximum height, maximum floor ratio, those kinds of things. Those can be, there's a certain number of concessions that a project that comes in that proposes a density bonus can receive. And those could include going above your maximum height. They could include going above your maximum floor ratio. But trying to game the system, I mean, we've had, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think we've had two density bonus projects in the city of Arcata in its entire history, since, you know, the development of density bonus.
Which is that long ago?
Yeah, since the eighties. The density bonus has gotten a lot more attractive in the last couple of years. So it's not to say that the past, you know, performance is indicative of future predictions, but I just, I don't think that we're going to be able to get there. You're not going to be able to alleviate your concern without dramatically reducing density below what we currently have to try and offset. If you said, for example, I don't want any building to ever be taller than four stories in the city of Arcata, you would probably have to set your densities and your development thresholds so that you're at like one story to ensure that you got to four stories with the density bonus.
I'm not the city's lawyer, which you couldn't do because you'd be trying to escape other housing laws about reducing density. You know, right? It's, there's, you'd run into a whole other legal buzz-off by trying to do that.
No, that is true. I'm just saying that, you know, the, as a thought experiment, like to try and figure out, how do you garner a low enough density so that you don't have anything above four floors? You're absolutely right. We would, if the city adopts standards that are less than what its current standards are, the state will enforce on us for, you know, for basically trying to subvert the various housing laws that have been adopted recently.
Go ahead, Judith.
This is a suggestion, but also a question. The suggestion is that when we revise the zoning code, which we're going to have to do in order to implement the general plan anyway, that we look really closely at some of those standards that are not density explicit to make sure that they're doing what we want to do. And we're going to have an opportunity to do that. And the second is about LU 3A, the no upper density limit. So this is a sort of a weird catch with the density bonus law. If we have no upper density limit, we can't calculate density bonuses, and so the rest of the standards are the standards that will prevail, right? Or am I misinterpreting that?
No, the state does allow for areas that don't have density, upper density limits to, for projects that are proposing a density bonus to, you know, equate that in other ways. And so if, if a, and that's generally going to mean that you're going to have more floors than you would otherwise have if the developer chooses to do that.
Okay, so right now, our residential high density with density bonuses would allow up to 90 units per acre, correct?
I'm sorry, currently?
Our residential high zoning district.
Thirty-two units per acre.
Well, with the density bonus, based on what we're proposing at 50 units per acre, you add an 80% density bonus, and that gets you up to 90, right? Calculating. My arithmetic doesn't work really well, but.
No, that's correct. I just wanted to double check.
Okay, so this, this is, this is really tricky when someone checks my arithmetic in public. So if we have no upper density limit, would those state override rules then assume that we're talking about 90 units per acre plus commercial, if we've got commercial and residential together, which is what we're kind of proposing?
I don't have, you know, a ton of information on this, but from what I've heard, if there isn't an upper density limit, HCD has basically another method, working with the developers on a case-by-case basis, to determine basically an equivalent density based on other standards. So the developer has to come forward with some sort of argument about what they think the density would be that they'd be able to achieve, given like height and floor area ratio, and then they use that as a standard. So I don't think they would look to our other zone types as a starting point necessarily.
Okay, so then the question here is, are these going to be discretionary projects? Are we going to have discretionary approval of those CC projects with no upper density limit? Or are they?
Generally, yeah, there's a design review in the central commercial, and part of the reason why there's no upper density limit is because the parcels in the central commercial are generally so small that if you set even an arbitrarily high, you know, density calculation, you may end up, depending on the parcel size, making it so that you can't even build, you know, two units, for example. So we eliminated the upper density limit on the central commercial.
And this isn't a new elimination? This is something that's been in place for quite a long time?
Okay, so it would be really important when we get to revising our zoning code to actually spend some time figuring out what exactly this is going to potentially give us, especially if we have, you know, a developer who's going to assemble multiple parcels in order to build something bigger. Because, and maybe a clear picture of what state law is going to tell us to do at that moment, which is, you know, maybe a year from now.
I can go back and find the meeting. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about density bonus previously.
Yeah, yeah, we did, but it didn't relate to areas with no upper density limit. And we never broached that.
We actually did talk about that with respect to the gateway area, because the proposal for the gateway area also is, you know, at this point to let the building heights regulate. And we have some, you know, some calculations around what potential densities could be using some estimates. But yeah, I think we covered that. So I can send out a message to the planning commission to refresh your memory about that discussion.
Yeah, that would help, but also the, you know, the four things that the developer could choose to give themselves could basically eliminate. Pretty much all of those limits that we've had as alternatives to density. Anyway, I guess I'd be okay putting that off until we get to the zoning code at this point, because I think we might stick ourselves otherwise.
Agreed. I think we're at a good stopping point for this evening at 8:20. So I would like to move on to.
Can I just quickly confirm that we're turning this red? No change?
Can we kind of turn it pink also, since that's one of those things that we are going to need to come back to? If not, you know, with this language, then in the future, the issue hasn't gone away.
It would, to clarify, though, it would be going off of the bike rack discussion for this period, right? It would be coming back when we discuss the land use code in a year or two years. Is that the intent? I'm seeing some nods.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Yeah, and so the rubric here, pink is to make it consistent with a prior decision. Gray is to put this discussion, this policy discussion off until some later date. Red is, there's, this recommendation has been dropped, and green is that it's been approved. And so where are we at on this one?
I think red, and we revisit it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, I would like, I would like to move on to correspondence and communications and check in to see if we have any correspondence from any planning commission members. Dan?
Yeah, two things. Can staff clarify what's happening on 516?
I'm sorry, on 516?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we're holding a open house for, it's primarily geared towards folks who live and work in the gateway area. No, it is not for the planning commission. You should not attend. It's not a planning commission meeting. It's primarily for folks that live in the Creamery District and/or in the gateway area that have, you know, questions or concern. The idea here was to address off the planning commission's concerns and solutions set, concerns that were raised about what happens to the Creamery Building and the Creamery District, you know, as a district. And so we'll, we've, you know, we're working to notice that meeting to folks that live out there, work out there. We're working with the Playhouse to host us, and staff will bring that information back to the planning commission on the 23rd.
I have one more question to just throw out. They're not looking for discussion, mostly to the chair and/or staff, as to clarify. For public comment, often the message to the public is for items on the agenda. Sometimes it's for items not on the agenda. And as the public comes, I imagine they're a little confused. And from the commission perspective, I'm a little confused. I'd sure like to hear public comment on what we're going to talk about that night. And sometimes it's a little painful to listen to stuff that's like so not on the agenda and, you know, maybe impertinent to anything we're even thinking about right now. So if there could be a little streamlining along that, it would sure help me, perhaps them.
I mean, I think our special meeting structure is pretty clear that we are taking one comment period on four items that are on our agenda.
Thank you.
And we've stuck with that, with the one exception that if we have a review like the Tuttle project, that then we're taking comment specific to that project separately. But otherwise, one comment period, always specifically on items that are on our agenda.
Thank you for the clarity.
And probably in the scope of that, I've let people drift a little broadly around things that are quote "on the agenda." It's just hard otherwise. Any other comments, Judith?
The question, if we're taking comments only on things that are on. The question, if, if we're taking comments only on things that are on the agenda because these are special meetings, when does the public get an opportunity to comment on things that are not on the agenda?
Well, I mean, anyone can email us, write to us at any point on, on anything that's on anyone's mind at anyone, at any time. I think that channel of communication is always open.
Christian, this is your last meeting, right?
Thank you.
Can we officially thank Christian for his service?
I would love that. I wanted to wait to make sure.
Let's vote on it.
Right. I'm, I'm, usually we don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, really, ingredients of agreement. Usually we don't know that it's someone's last meeting until after that meeting is passed. And so personally, I appreciate that you let us know and still came back for one more, once more into the breach, as it were. So just been great to have you on the commission and get to know you. And I know we're all going to miss you.
Well, it's, it's been an honor and I'm super appreciative of the things I've learned over the last three years and the relationships I've developed, you know. Granted that it's, you know, and, you know, in these chambers or when I randomly see you guys around the city. But yeah, it's been a pleasure working with city staff, working with David. Yeah, I'm really going to miss you guys. I'm going to really miss the opportunity. And I also want to thank the public for all the comments they provided us and participating with us in this process and participating with me in this process and continue to participate in this process. So yeah, it's been an honor and I'm really thankful for all of you and for what you guys do as volunteers and also as, as staff for the city. Thank you so much.
Any communications from staff this evening? Okay, then there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.